The applicant to Town of Auburn requesting site plan approval for the use of a nonprofit educational institution is allowed by section 3.2.3.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on the property located at 7 West Street, 780 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 60, posel 58 and 77. Okay, who wants to, uh, who wants to start this?
I can start off. Mark Kimzy, Chairman of the School Buildings Committee.
Sure.
Thanks for having us tonight and having, I know we aren't going to be in a final decision tonight because we still have the CONSCOM and ZBA coming up. We'll be back there. So I'd like to take the opportunity to walk through any of the issues that were raised in the Graves reports and, you know, VHB's traffic studies and go through that. I know that there was some confusion about the return of the site plans. They had gone back to Graves. They weren't copied to Adam earlier in December. Graves gave us a final report back to, for start engineering and stuff on those. So we can go through in general and talk about, you know, I know there's a big 20-page response in front of you. There's a lot of items on there that were errant markings on the drawings or that, you know, the general scopes are changed, but we could talk about the bigger picture stuff and not go through all the individual stuff.
To be honest with you, we only got this yesterday by email.
Okay.
Okay, so the planning board basically requires that we have sufficient time to go over any reviews, reports, et cetera, before the meeting. Usually it's a minimum of four business days. Basically, um, we shouldn't even be carrying on this meeting here. We're going to do it out of courtesy to you people, all right? But we have not had the correct time to review any of the VHB report or the response, the response, this response we just got now. So we're operating at kind of a huge disadvantage here, but I studied this in quite lengthy detail, so I'd be willing to discuss some of these things with you and along with the other board members. And I think what we're going to do first of all, if I, if I'm on the same page with the rest of the board members, is start with the VHP peer review. And we're going to start on page two of that peer review where it says, "General Findings." Do all of you have a copy of that? You do?
Yep.
Okay.
And I, we have our traffic engineer, Nich Engineering, too. We can talk to-
Do you want to print a copy?
I'll wait until the other members get the copy of this, but- We're going to discuss these one at a time and, uh, I'm going to want comments from all of you on how you, uh, how you deal with these findings.
Was it just so cold up there?
It was freezing. It was terrible. It's a courageous installation. Wow. Beautiful. I never expected anything like that, guys. How long were you up there? Eighty miles. Round trip. For two-hour class. Hey. You got the money, you got the time. Yeah, he goes, "Ty, come on." Copy the pain. Only can I wear it. I don't have one. I don't wear my red cross shirt in case I have to do ZBR.
Let's do it in the room. Let's check it out.
Is it just so cold up there? Was it freezing? It was freezing. It was terrible. It's a courageous installation. Wow. Beautiful. I never expected anything like that, guys. How long were you up there? Eighty miles. Round trip. For two-hour class. Hey. You got the money, you got the time. Yeah, he goes, "Ty, come on." Copy the pain. I only can I wear it. I don't have one. I don't wear my red cross shirt in case I have to do ZBR.
Let's do it in the room. Let's check it out.
He told me about the last thing. He said he should come down. Okay, we, we also have your, okay, we're going to start first of all with the general findings. According to the peer review by VHB, the proposed West Street project will have a measurable impact on the capacity of the surrounding road network and capital consideration should be given to off-site traffic mitigation for improving traffic operation conditions. What, uh, what is your, what is your answer on that particular finding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Faisal Museni. I'm with Nich Engineering, but I'm a traffic engineer. I've been in this business for 30 years. The same statement probably, if I was doing peer review, I would put the same language in there. And the reason for that is the number of vehicle trips that being generated by the site. These are, will be additional trips coming to the school and leaving the school. And the issue is that there hasn't been any actual study to determine the extent of the impacts that are going to be generated by the number of vehicles that would be using the school. So it's really more of a general statement that additional studies should be done to really qualify the level of impacts and how can you alleviate those impacts. And I think that's what the intent of the, of the statement.
Do you have any questions to ask him about that particular finding?
I guess that just leaves me curious. You guys have provided a traffic study based on existing conditions and traffic counts with some modeling for proposed usage post-completion of the building with even modeling it out multiple years. How does that not qualify as a study of the traffic impacts? What would you recommend as a study for that?
The, I mean, definitely, it's a very good question and it's always the question that we do ask. What we provide is really when the site has existed today, in terms, if we're looking at traffic numbers, for example, the traffic counts, figure out what existing numbers are, then we add the school to it and then qualify those trips are going to be generated. And then based on the numbers, looking at the numbers, and we're saying that there will be an off-site studies that has to be done, which really kind of outside the purview of this initial process of the MSBA for the school itself. And typically on schools, which is, I mean, I've done about 30 of them so far, we do them in two steps. The first step is really to have the initial study, which is focused on the site, and then access and egress from the site. And then as you get into the implementation of the impacts, you look at, for the second, what we call the full-blown kind of traffic study, where you look at the off-site and what are the impacts in the off-site and what can mitigation you can provide to alleviate those impacts. However, I mean, I don't want to talk about finances and what the obligations are, and those are things we keep in mind when we try to recommend mitigation. If we provide mitigation for the things we can, are within the scope of the project, and then the other mitigation has to come really as a next step eventually, which is basically will involve the town to kind of step in and assist in that.
So that means more taxes for everybody.
Well, I, to some extent, I can tell, I mean, right now, you know, another study came through and said, talked about that we should look at the timing on the West Street, Southbridge Street intersection, you know, about, you know, re-timing those lights for the school time periods and other mitigations. But there is in the overall general budget right now, monies to do with some additional traffic studies now, you know, so we don't, what we're trying to ascertain is that, you know, we can get site plan approval for the school itself and then with the continuing, you know, right now, I could say that we can do some further studies. I can't say that, you know, all the, whatever comes out of those studies can all be funded underneath, you know, the school stuff because, you know, depending on how much money we save and, and the construction cost of it and then, you know, we might have to go back to either special time meeting or go back to, you know, the town and figure out if there's other ways to fund parts of it, you know, for the full mitigation because maybe as it stands right today, I mean, there is a traffic issue in that, that whole neighborhood. The school's definitely going to add to it. It's going to add more in the morning. I think the afternoon stuff is going to be, you know, we're two hours ahead of the real afternoon crunch. So, I mean, there is impact that the project will be doing to it. I mean, I think, so, you know, we can make a commitment that we'll still continue to work and do some further study and try to-
Well, here-
-work with some stuff, but in terms of, you know, actual, at the moment, I mean, we've got some mitigation, but, you know, we've got, you know, the speed zone stuff, you know, containing traffic areas, you know, not blocking intersections type of things.
Well, here's what I, here's what I see that you want, okay? This is what I see that the people from the committee want. They want us to approve a site plan approval based on all the information that we have so that you can get going, do things in an expeditious manner, okay? And then after it's all done, then worry about all the peripheral issues. I'm not about to do that, and I don't think any board member is about to do that, okay? I want, and I'm sure they want, these peripheral problems at least worked out to a point that is workable before we go ahead and issue a site plan approval for you to stop the school. If you can do it without us, then by all means, do what you got to do. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to go through these, I'm going to go through these issues that I've seen in this peer review and then at that particular point in time, you're going to have to come back with some, you're going to have to come back with some corrective issues. The second part of this is the introduction on this. It said, "The description of the proposed project and the existing middle school site, including the assessment of the current parking and circulation issues, is reasonable and appears to be presented in an accurate manner." Okay. Uh, I understand now that you have to go before the ZBA to take care of the additional parking spaces that you're trying to get mitigated down to the level that you have them at now?
That's correct.
And you haven't done that, that hasn't been done yet. Is that correct?
No, that, we're on for next Thursday night. That's why we do, we're acknowledging that, you know, tonight, we're not, not seeking final here because we know that we have to get that before this, or we're trying to do some paperwork.
Okay, and they, and, uh, we're going to go on to page three. I've got several things outlined here on page three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Do you mind if I kind of make a quick comment?
No, go ahead.
I guess part of my concern is that, I think the planning board's made a lot of good strides in being very, trying to be very consistent and, you know, turn around quickly and easy reviews. And the process that we've been utilizing to do that has been one in which we utilize the peer review agencies to review kind of the technical data and then work with the applicant to come back with, so that you have to come back a limited amount of times and in that, really work out those technical engineering details and then you come back to really a final review with us in which we can make determinations on those things in which don't line up with that. And right now, I don't feel like we're there, including, we just got this memo today with responses, but we don't know if we have a Graves response to this. And I, for you guys to be successful and, you know, being personally a proponent of the project and wanting to see this go forward and, but in this capacity, I think we need to have this information completed in order to help you be successful. So really, if you, I guess my recommendation would be for you to come back at a point at which you have answers to these things, that we can make some final determinations. I guess my second comment on that would be, from a planning board perspective and in this capacity, we have to make a decision based upon the proponent coming to us with a project that we can approve. And that includes some of these off-site mitigation things, which evidently are not within your financing element, but that's really irrelevant to us. You know, the proponent being the committee typically comes in with a proposal and we have to judge that because the planning board is at some point going to be judged on the success of that application. So when it comes to the traffic study and the West Street improvements and all these things, I seem to keep hearing that, well, those are irrelevant because they're not within the scope of our financing, but from our review point, you kind of have to be able to review those things and comment and weigh on them because we're going to, at the end of the day, be judged on that. And so we want to see you guys be successful, but we also, I think, have to uphold our responsibility here to putting forward a project that's good in the long term for the town. So whether it's within your findings, financing sources or not, I would really hope and encourage that you guys could find a solution for this so that we can approve a project that's good in the long term for the town. And again, you want to support it, want to push it-
Well, I mean, I think in terms of what the VHB report came back, I mean, you know, it's, I know you only got the, some of the response stuff today and, you know, we can walk through that or we can wait. I mean, most of that, and I think, you know, we discussed it earlier with Nich and stuff, but it's not out of the, you know, understanding, you know, we understand that it's a school zone, it needs, you know, there's a speed problem in that area where, you know, we're going to put up flashing school zone lights, the whole thing, it needs, you know, the coordination and stuff, but I mean, I think when it comes to start looking at if we're going further out in terms of intersections, that's kind of far beyond, you know, we can certainly help and do some of it and, you know, some of the studying and stuff, but I mean, it's not, you know, necessarily all as a result of the school going in there that you need to go on, you know, beyond looking at all these other areas. I mean, you know, it exists today that we have those issues over there and, I mean, I think, you know, so, I mean, in terms of, you know, dealing with the fire department, dealing with the, you know, some of the sightline issues, you know, we can respond to those. I mean, those are in here. I mean, I don't, you know, um, you know, the VHB, you know, said the, the town may want to look at, you know, going to further intersections and stuff, but, I mean, that's not-
That's not covered, that, the, improving the intersection thing is not covered on their school building. That has to come from the town. Same thing when we acquired properties all along, like when we did the high school, all that had to come from the town. When we did Yonshing's, that had to come from the town. Holmstones had to come from the town.
But I think from, what I'm hearing from Mr. Weaver is that it's not a matter of who's funding it or who's doing the work. It's all holistically part of the project and his concern is that if we-
It's not provided for.
No, that, that's not his concern. His concern is that if we approve the school on this parcel and we don't look at the site distance on West Street or the light of the fire station or any of the other issues that have been brought up that-
Well, we're not saying we're not looking at that stuff, so.
Well, if I may finish my, my, my point on his understanding is that if we do that and say, oh, well, we'll look at them later, there's no guarantee, no teeth, and if for whatever reason they're not included, then this board will be judged as having not done the duty that it's charged with. Is that essentially what you're saying? And it's not, it's not necessarily who's funding it, it's that these off-site improvements are married to the project, however uncomfortable that may be as part of the funding process. It's the same thing that we deal with on subdivisions where the feeder road, if we look at South Hold Road, Mr. Post wanted to do South Hold Meadow. South Hold Road couldn't handle the traffic, so he had to do an improvement plan for that. It, it all ties back together.
And on a smaller scale, when we, when we did the, when we took a look at the Dunkin' Donut, the changes they wanted to make, we took a look at the impacts that that second driveway and second drive-through was going to have on the turning movements coming in and out and pedestrians and, so it's something we need to look at as a whole.
I really don't want to overstep the bounds of the planning board. I don't, I don't think we are here. I think that kind of part of our role is to judge the project as a whole, and if this was a private developer coming in, we would be required to do that and their financing sources would be irrelevant. Of course, this being a town project and, you know, all of us wanting to see this go forward, I think we want to, you know, work with you in whatever way we can to make that happen, but I just, I worry that what you're asking us to do is something that we can't necessarily do, and if that is the case, knowing your timeline, I really want to put that out early so that you guys have time to try to work on a solution so that we can keep this going and not derail it in any way. I don't know if the other committee members agree with that or disagree or-
I personally want to see this thing go as quickly as possible, sir. How do you feel about it?
Oh, quickly, but, you know, at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, you said it was a-
You know, we, we really have, we really have a situation here too, according to what I'm reading here, we, we have a situation where we've got a boat ramp, emergency vehicles, and a huge increase in traffic in that 1,000-foot area that, unless something's done, the only problem I had with the project from the beginning, and I stated it from the beginning, was the exit and access off of West Street with the current amount of traffic and the emergency vehicles and the boat ramp and whatever, right there at that, it's all right there at that point. There has to be a way to rectify that. And until some situation is, is brought to us that shows us that all's going to be well and good, like Jonathan pointed out, I think, I think there's a lot more that has to go into this and I think the other board members agree to that, too. There's nowhere near enough answers to what we need to complete this. And again, having all this information thrown at us in one or two days, this is not good enough, just not good enough. I would recommend that we, that we continue this until we come up with some, until we come up with some more answers. I, how do you want to, how do you want to set that forward?
I don't know if they have a comment to that or not, but I, again, I want to see this successful, I want to see this go forward. I don't want to be obstructionist in any way, just, I want to, trying to tell you guys what I think, you know, at least from my perspective, we kind of need to help you be successful and again-
I mean, this is actually a special meeting just for you. We scheduled-
And I would think, we appreciate that.
In seven-degree weather.
I mean, I, I think we did mitigate things along West Street.
Eric Moore, Glenroan Pagano Architects. First of all, thank you for having us here tonight, and I know a lot of thought and effort went into the comments on this project. We had, as, as you can see, our response is 20 pages long. I mean, that's, there's, there are numerous comments and we've, we feel like we've addressed the onsite issues that have been raised. And I say onsite, we've recognized that there are offsite issues as well. And while we, we cannot, I, I understand your reluctance to, to have, to approve this project as is with the, you know, somewhat vague assurances that the offsite improvements will be made, because we, we can't commit to those offsite improvements. There, some of the, the impacts to the, the issues that have been raised, the sidewalks out to West Street, the things that they incur are, will be, you know, significant expenses that, and, and as, as you noted, they're, they're not, they're not reimbursable by the state. There's potential land takings, there's utility pole relocations, there's, there's Conservation Commission issues with wetlands where Southbridge Street abuts, abuts West Street.
Can I ask, Eric? So has, first of all, I, from the consulting side, I understand how you guys are hamstrung by your contract, but from the applicant- First of all, thank you for having us here tonight, and I know a lot of thought and effort went into the comments on this project. We had, as, as you can see, our response is 20 pages long, I mean, that's, there's, there are numerous comments, and we've, we feel like we've addressed the onsite issues that have been raised. And I say onsite, we've recognized that there are off-site issues as well. And while we, we cannot, I, I understand your reluctance to, to have, to approve this project as is with, with the, you know, somewhat vague assurances that the off-site improvements will be made, because we, we can't commit to those off-site improvements. There, some of the, the impacts to the, the issues that have been raised, the sidewalks out to West Street, the things that they incur are, will be, you know, significant expenses that, and, and as, as you noted, they're, they're not, they're not reimbursable by the state. There's potential land takings, there's utility pole relocations, there's, there's conservation commission issues with wetlands where Southbridge Street abuts, abuts West Street.
Can I ask, Eric? So has, first of all, I, from the consulting side, I understand how you guys are hamstrung by your contract, but from the applicant perspective, is really what we're focused on, and in that case, they can or they have to respond, or I feel at least that's the case. And my second question, you're referring to a bunch of improvements that would need to be done, has a design for what's needed or a cost estimate for what's needed been compiled, so at least we have some sense of what is needed to correct this?
We have not, we have not, we have not, but we have looked at, we've made a very preliminary look at, at the, who owns the property, so Mass Electric owns the property adjacent to us at, at the intersection of Southbridge and, and West Street. You have another private develop, private owner, I believe the first driveway into, from, from West Street is a, is a private owner. Then you have the, the town and Water District own up to the reservoir crossing there. You know, we, we look, as, as we've designed things, you know, we, we try and recognize the, the budget parameters that are, and having, having had this, this initial Nitch engineering study, we didn't, we didn't see anything in there that, that said this, this won't work. We, we didn't see anything in their recommendations, and there was a page of recommendations, and we have, I think we've responded to those, you know, the, the retiming of the traffic signals, the, the flashing lights in school zone on West Street, which will reduce, reduce traffic speed during school hours, the access to, pedestrian access to, to what, to Southbridge Street is, you know, we've made that via recognizing that the enormous cost of, of putting sidewalks along West Street and the widening and, and, and land takings and things that I mentioned before, we, we, we made that access via a sonic circle. It accomplishes the same thing. You've got sidewalks on both sides of Southbridge Street. We think it's a more efficient solution, but, you know, again, just, just, just to restate what, what I said about the reimbursement for this, MSBA will not reimburse, you know, categorically, categorically deny, you know, traffic, off-site traffic improvements. And we, you know, when we did get the VHB report, what, while we, you know, we don't disagree with any of the recommendations in that report, you know, the, the turning lane, it would, there's no question, it would, it would improve traffic, widening West Street, there's no question it would improve traffic. But what we didn't, we didn't hear them say that, that the school won't function properly, it won't, it won't function as, as designed with West Street in its current condition. You know, we, we see the, the potential impact of delays in, in pretty significant dollars. It, it will, it will delay the project, and those are real, those are real costs, both in, in, you know, the direct costs of, of construction for the, the improvements, but also in, in the delays to the, to the project, you know, in terms of, you know, added winter conditions to the, to the project, you know, potential cost increases, you know, those are, those are pretty significant dollars too. So we, we are asking that, that you separate those. I understand your reluctance not to do those, but, you know, I think Mark, the committee chairman is, has offered a commitment to, to work with, with the committee, and while we can't, we, I can't guarantee that, that these off-site improvements will, will be done, I, I know I can't, and Mark, the chairman can't either, but we are asking for, for you, for you to consider that we'll do our best to work, to work with you on, on those improvements.
You know, it's amazing that, it, it really is amazing that a project this large and a project that was determined by several committees, first to purchase the land or to own the land or you own the land, and, and to set up the amount that it was going to take to put the, the project together, that it wasn't discussed, that there would be expenses, off-site expenses, and that was told to the people too, so that they would understand that the town would have to accept the brunt of any off-site expenses that were incurred. Would they have been as ready to accept this project if they knew that there was a huge, abundant expense involved in off-site preparation?
I mean, we, if those issues had been raised, and I, I speak specifically to widening of West Street and the, and the associated land takings, we would have responded to those, but we, we attended development coordinating, coordinating group meetings, the, the issues that were raised were sidewalk access to West Street, that was one of them, there was, there was no mention of a, of a turning lane. I, I think, I think if those issues had been raised, we would have, we would have responded to them, and, and I think money would have been carried in the, in the total project budget, even, even though it wouldn't be reimbursable.
I mean, it's not that we have zero mitigations out on West Street right now, I mean, we don't, we're not saying we're not doing anything. I mean, there is stuff that's being done right now, there is, you know, even from our study, it's saying that, yeah, we've got to take a look at the West Street, Southbridge Street intersection, that, that signal needs to be looked at for retiming, I mean, that, you know, there's not, that's a study, and it's, you know, contacting with the state, and then they, you know, it's a reprogramming of the signals, it's not necessarily any kind of major reconstruction there to do that.
Go ahead, Ian. I guess, you know, the timing of the lights keeps coming up, and I was, I was reading the Nitch engineering study and I, and I, I made the note, and it seems like you're eliminating the pedestrian phase to increase the timing for the vehicular phase per the, at least the way that it's worded in here, it says the pedestrian phase is rarely used, and that time could then be reallocated to the vehicular phase. You're adding 560 pre-teens, teens to an area that may choose at some point to walk somewhere, and you're talking about eliminating the pedestrian phase from the single, singleized intersection, you know, I, I don't know that that's necessarily the one magic bullet that's going to, that's going to save West Street, and I don't know if that's just outside of school hours, but it would seem that it would be counterproductive outside of school hours.
We, we actually did respond to that comment, and I think, I think Nitch Engineering can respond. I believe it was a misunderstanding of...
Okay.
Yeah, right. I think what happened is that it was looked at, the analysis itself, which doesn't show the pedestrian phase as an exclusive pedestrian phase. The reason why we do that is because of the number of pedestrians that use the intersection are such a low number. During the count, they counted pedestrians, it was a very low number. When we do the analysis, if we have a large number of pedestrians, so we show the pedestrian phase, and that would take time away from the vehicle phase, so it will show the operation as being worse than it is. So in this situation, because we don't hardly have any pedestrians walking through there, so we exclude that phase because we don't want to impact the operation of the intersection.
And in terms of pedestrians too, I mean, right now at the middle school, current middle school on Swanson Road, which is in a fairly good-sized residential neighborhood, I mean, there, there are 13% or less walkers, and then bad weather drops even further than that. The new location, I mean, it's, it's expected that there's going to be a lot, a lot fewer. So it's, you know, so we're not, we're not talking about eliminating anything, I mean, we're putting in this stuff, I mean, that's why we're looking at the, you know, saying that the Masonic Circle, you know, option for the sidewalk was the, you know, most cost-effective, because the real use of it is not, you know...
Mark, what's the extent of the wetlands between the Masonic land and Parrows land? We own that piece of land, and there, it's what, 75 or 100 feet wide, could a sidewalk be run through there?
There, there could be a sidewalk run through there, there's some, you know, we'd have to, we'd be inside a wetland buffer area. We've looked at that a little bit, we could do a, we, there's a school garden up to the, up to a point, it's a hard sidewalk, and then we could go to like a stone dust sidewalk or something out to Southbridge, so we could, you know, get away, you know, make it easier for going through wetland areas.
Yeah, that'd be a lot easier than West Street.
Absolutely, yes.
There's a sidewalk on the Masonic Circle, and that's remaining, so...
Right. And there was a comment about, I think, in one of Adam's emails about coming back, coming back on the, building a new sidewalk on the Masonic Lodge side, and right now, I mean, it's, you know, we got, you know, probably eight to 10 mature trees along that we'd have to, we'd have to tear down and landscaping and stuff and...
And I just want to respond to that real quick, I think that was also a misunderstanding, because I wasn't saying all the way out to Southbridge Street, but you're crossing Masonic Circle to access the Center Island, and then crossing it again to access the sidewalk, so if you're already constructing a portion of sidewalk...
I get you.
It would make more sense to me to keep the amount of crossings on Masonic to a minimum because...
Going down a little bit along it.
Correct, rather than, than putting the sidewalk on the island, keep it on the east side of Masonic and then cross over, because Masonic also provides a potential ad hoc pickup area for parents who don't want to get stuck in the queue, so if there becomes a line of cars, you may end up with, you know, kids darting in and out to get across the street when they're using what they think is a safe crosswalk, and it may actually provide for, you know, a more dangerous situation. This computer is awful right now. So rather than coming, you know, across, walking, and then crossing, you know, maybe it comes out here and crosses down, and then you cross once, you're still within your limit of work, you're probably constructing a similar length of sidewalk at a similar cost, and you're eliminating at least one pedestrian crossing in an area where there's, you know, the potential for conflict.
Yeah, you'd, you'd lose a couple of trees, I think, but not, not the, the entire...
And then, you know, maybe there's a way to work around that, maybe it's, there's some benefit to it, you know, it just...
You would just have to cross the driveway that goes into the parking area of the lodge.
Into the Masonic, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, you know, you're kind of, and I don't know...
Almost just to the right of where your mouse clicker is.
Yeah, right here. Oh, on the other side here.
Right there. That's a curb cut that goes into...
Mm-hmm.
The lodge.
Lodge isn't usually used during the day, usually it's only on Tuesdays or evenings, most lodge meetings in the week.
Does the rest of the board have an opinion on the sidewalk on West Street? Trying to help you guys narrow down a few issues. Personally, I feel like a lot of the students are going to go out by the sports fields anyways, their likely motions are probably going to Crystal Caves, and, you know, maybe they'll walk that way anyways, if there was no sidewalk on West Street, to get to the other locations, you know, out back, hopefully move into their new location as approved. But I get, I would, personally, I think I'm more concerned about the traffic mitigation on West Street, and if, if it helped you to not have a sidewalk there and instead have additional right-of-way for an extra turning lane, I think I'd be okay with that, I don't know about the rest of you guys.
That would help. What side of the road are they planning on putting this turning lane in, on?
I don't know, we, we don't have a plan.
Well, which turning lane are you talking about, turning into the site?
Yeah, because most of the cars are probably going to be coming off Southbridge Street.
Correct. I guess I'm, I'm saying that if, if...
So you're crossing.
If we could help you guys by saying, you know, by relaxing a requirement for a sidewalk on West Street, which would allow you to better do additional traffic mitigation, which we've been asking for, I'm wondering if that's something that you guys, everyone would be in favor.
Traffic, the traffic is the main, safety, the safety in, in traffic is the main concern that I've had from day one, okay? The, the shot, queuing distance between the entrance to the school and the light, the, the number of vehicles normally using that road, infinitum, and the fact that, according to this study, they're going to increase the vehicles by, according to this, it said that West Street during the weekday morning peak hours, it'll increase the vehicles by 145 new, new vehicles eastbound and 165 new vehicles westbound, okay? That's what this project is going to create. So now, if you add into the mix some students pushing a button to cross that West Street, and you add into the mix there may be an emergency fire vehicle that has to enter that site, I mean, you're going to have a mess. It's going to be a total mess.
Sure. And I think part of it, personally, why I'd rather see pedestrian traffic go down the much less busy Masonic Circle than, you know, providing them an opportunity to go in front of a fire station, which is hazardous.
But they're still, if they, if they come from Griggs Development, okay, for instance, and they're coming down to, to enter that site, they're still going to have to cross West Street on Southbridge Street in order to get to the Masonic...
Sure.
Circle.
Sure.
Again, every time they press that button, you're going to have a huge... That's right. You're going to, that whole section's going to shut down.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's, that intersection is my major concern, it's even, it's in the VHB peer review, it's at an F level of service, long vehicle delays and queues, greater than 24 vehicles during the weekday morning peak traffic period, and that's five days a week, 180 days of the year, it's a substantial concern.
Plus you've got VFI trucks going into Hardscrabble Road.
And then the morning they're coming out virtually at the same time that the...
That site is a, is a quagmire. That whole site is a, is a, with the, with the emergency, safety's another issue, and we're trying to get all these things in perspective and make them work. That's something that, I mean, I, again, I haven't had a chance to read this yet. And that, that West Street is a big shortcut from 56 to 12 in the mornings, you know, people don't want to go down to the corner at 56 and take a left, because it can cut off that whole, that whole construction thing right now along 12, and it cuts off that light at 56, and that, it's, the traffic there is... What would you, what would you people want to recommend, that we come back after we have a chance to read and digest and...
Absolutely want to be able to read through everything.
How you feel about that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure you guys have looked at the traffic flow on the site, eight ways to Sunday. Is there opportunity, rather than having them turn in that first driveway, to go down to the second driveway and then brings them up and queuing them up on the property to come out to the light, does that, is, would that be, would there be opportunity there to do something like that, changing the flow of traffic on the site? You said, what was it, 12 buses, 12 or 13 buses, 40 feet, plus then all the parent pickup, drop-off, and move the traffic further down West Street, queue it on the property to come out to the light, I mean, is, is there opportunity there to look at that?
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the reasons for the, for the clockwise rotation for parent drop-off is if the passenger doors are open to the sidewalk. If it's, if it's counterclockwise and the kids get off and they have to cross or something.
Everyone has to cross it.
Yeah. It seems there's much more opportunity, you know, keep more of the vehicles on the site versus, you know, for that way, but I do understand that.
Coming off the site is not going to be as bad as going...
But it will, when it, when you come, taking out, taking that left out of the driveway and coming up to West and Southbridge Street, it's quiet now, and that's, that's the point they're making.
Because people are crossing in front of you.
Sure. And then, like you say, there are the pedestrians, that stops the intersection and the bottleneck in places.
All the people coming down West Street to Southbridge Street though, you've got that whole line of traffic there, and then the people turning off of Southern Street wanting to turn into the school, nobody's going to give them a break, you know? So now you've got all this backed up until the light changes, now a kid presses a button and wants to cross West Street.
To walk to the Masonic Circle to walk through.
And at the same time, we have a, a fire truck called for, I mean, I can just see it, I can just... And at the same time, we have a, a fire truck called for. I mean, I, I can just see it. I can just see it, a nasty, uh, mess there. And there's got to be a way to, there's got to be a way to correct it. I'm not an engineer. I, I can't tell you what the way to correct it is, but there's got to be a way to correct it. Show me. Show me the beef.
I, I think what I'd like to see is I'd like to come into a meeting where we have a memo from Graves that, um, says that all of the issues. That have been raised, have been resolved to their satisfaction, with the exception of those things which require our input. And, you know, at that point, we can weigh on just those.
We're effectively there for the, for the, for the onsite.
Okay. For the Graves review.
Graves review are effectively completed.
Okay.
And I think, I think you guys have the.
Yeah, that came in today. That's the one that.
We just got it yesterday.
Well, I think you raised another good point earlier too.
Yesterday.
Sure. Is that what is it going to cost to do these, to, to make this eligible?
Right.
I think it's, I agree, I agree with you. I, I agree with both of you. I, I think that what we'd like is, is we'd like to know. What it would take to clean up that mess between the light and the entrance to the, to the school or the two entrances to the school. And, uh, how it's going to be done.
I think, I think we've, we've made the recommended, or Nitch's engineering, uh, Nitch Engineering's report. Made the recommendation that at some point in the future, depending on traffic load, a left turn lane would be, uh, would be beneficial to alleviate traffic. Queuing up southbound on West Street, which I think is the, the main concern I'm hearing right now. I think. Now that, that will likely incur, um, land taking, notice of intent and, uh. Utility pole relocation. Will incur a significant.
For what?
And I think Nitch Engineering can, can elaborate on the permitting process with Mass DOT, but that, that's, that's a much more extensive permitting process and a lengthier process than, than the, uh. And a simple re-timing of, of the, the existing, uh, existing signals at, at that intersection. It would likely require additional equipment, if I'm correct, at that, at that location.
That, that intersection is really owned by Mass DOT. And any work on that signal requires the Mass DOT process for approval. Now, if we're doing only a re-timing, I think it's much simpler, uh, process for them to approve that because we can, technically, we can hire a contractor to come in, re-tim the signal. But if we are doing any physical changes, then it has to go through their district, for example, with submittals and time to review and, and approve and all that. Depending on the improvements, the extent of them. So technically, if, if the intersection itself is really one of the high accident locations or it has safety issues. They will take that under their umbrella and, and make the improvement because they own it. So, so maybe, maybe to that extent, to look at, into that, to see if that intersection can fall under kind of safety improvement program. That we can suggest to Mass DOT to take a look at it. And, uh, maybe they can improve that intersection down the line.
Well, five hundred and some odd kids is enough to be concerned about, you know?
And there are like this, uh, safe walk to school programs that allow certain things. So there are various programs that helps out. And I know a lot of towns are getting some funding for those programs.
So what would you, so what would you want to, what would you want them to come back with?
I think what I'd love to see is, is come in with, you know, we, we come in and, you know, with a couple of days' notice. We have a memo from Graves that says all of the outstanding issues have been, you know, met to their satisfaction, with the exception of those things in which, you know, we all need to decide on. And then I'd also like to see a, um, you know, a similar type memo from VHB saying that there's a plan in place. You know, whether that's funded or just, you know, the town and the building, you know, the school committee has determined that they're going to work toward, I don't, I don't know. But I'd at least like to know that there's a, a plan in place, um, to accommodate for the traffic mitigation. At the West Street intersection as well as along West Street where there seem to be some safety concerns. And I appreciate that that might not be within the scope of what's reimbursable, but I think within the scope of the project. That's what we would require of any other proponent coming in for a project. And it's, I really, I, I want to approve this. I just, I feel like we as the board need to have certain things that allow us to do that without, um.
Compromising.
Compromising the, you know, the town's interests and, um, you know, we're willing to work with you on, on that, but, um. You know, I just want you guys to know, I think what we're looking for, or at least what I'm looking for, um, so, yeah, so we don't waste any more time because I know you don't have it. So we want to approve this quickly. We want to get, keep you guys moving. I think it's a great project. I think onsite, I didn't have, I think the building design looks great. I think the site layout is, is fine. I think, um, I didn't see any major issues there, provided that Graves were to agree. But I think this is an outstanding issue that somebody has to step up and figure out how we're going to accommodate it.
Adam, who are you, what were you suggesting this?
I mean, I think that the board has fairly clearly expressed what they're looking for. It sounds to me like the most, the, the way to sort of get to what you want is to have some, something a little bit more than a conceptual design. That lays out what the improvements on West Street might encompass. You know, where the widening would be, is it, you know, is it actual takings? How much of a taking? What are the tree impacts? And sort of a, a rough cost estimate. You know, are we talking five hundred thousand dollars? Are we talking twelve million? You know, that, it, it, it's easy to say takings, trees, wetlands, you know, utility poles, but until there's actually hard numbers. It's difficult to determine if it's a pill, pill that can be swallowed, whether it's, you know, the school, the town, whether it's an outside article at a special town meeting. How, how it gets done can be, be very dependent on what the actual scope of, of that is. You know, you mentioned you have additional monies for off-site traffic studies that get done later. Well, it's, it, it seems like it's later and it seems like that's kind of what the board is looking for is let's look at some hard and fast rubber meets the road. How do we fix or at least further mitigate the issue on West Street? Nitches has indicated perhaps a left turn lane to clear some of that backup off of the northbound lane of West Street. How long does that need to be? Uh, does that include widening? How much of that widening can be done on the five-seven parcel now? And how much of that is going to have a substantial environmental impact? And then what's the total cost of that? I think that's what I'm hearing from the chair. I, I think that's the direction that, that Mr. Weaver's leaned in. I don't think he's actually gone so far, but I think that that's. It seems like West Street is the issue and it seems like giving the board some hard design to look at. Because that's, that's what I'm hearing from them and that's what they've required of everybody else who's come in front of them over the past twenty-four months is. All right, we understand you have an issue. Show us how you want to correct it. And if we think it's reasonable, then we're going to look at moving forward with that. They want to approve one plan, one set of designs and be done and help you guys move on and be successful. And having those numbers, again, I think lets everybody sit down and determine what the funding source can be or, you know, might have to be.
So, how are you, I can get back to where we started out with. If we come back in two weeks or three weeks, whatever your next meeting is, after the, you know, after we go through COSSCOM and ZBA for those and, and come back to you and then have some, you know, give you the. Designs to you and, and stuff ahead of time so you can review it and look at it. Can the site plan be approved by itself and then still have some of the traffic mitigation and stuff going on further if it, if it's.
It can be approved with conditions.
Because.
So we can, we can approve it. We can approve it. And, and, and we can approve it and say, we can approve it and say, within a certain, like, the time after the project is done, this has to be completed. But we can approve the site plan with conditions. He does it all the time.
And I think, well, you do it.
The other one that writes it up.
Yes, and, and I think that there's a very fine line on conditions. And future improvements to potentially be done after the completion of a, of a building project. You're looking at, you know, potentially eighteen months of construction. And generally, when someone is issued a site plan approval, all of the conditions are satisfied by the time that a certificate of occupancy is issued. Or they're issued a temporary certificate of occupancy and required to continue moving to the completion of those conditions. So I guess the board has to decide how they want to address something. And whether or not what you're proposing can reasonably complete, be completed by the time you hope to occupy the building. And if not, what the impacts of that are and, you know, we're sort of in a special situation because it's the town and, you know, we all work for the town. And there's, you know, obviously mitigating factors we can, but it's a matter of ensuring that what gets approved as part of the conditions ultimately is, is constructed. Or else, you know, as, as John alluded to at the very beginning, this board, it can be seen as a failure. They failed to exercise their mission. So, you know, I think that there's, there's room to do it. But the scope of those conditions has to be manageable and has to be finite. It, it can't be an amorphous, so we're going to look at the traffic and we might do some of it. I think it has to be, these are what the off-site mitigation are going to be. This is the timeframe the board, you know, has set forth to have it done. And I think that it's going to require some offline conversations between the school department, the town manager, uh, the DPW. And, and some exploration of what funding is available and what options there are to, uh, find other funding, if it's necessary.
See, that funding, uh, that funding, uh, is not available to us. We, we don't know. It, it is available if we dug deep enough, but we don't know how much funding Bill Coyle has.
No, I.
We don't know, we don't know what you have, you know, so we, you have to enlighten us on this so that we, so that we can make a decision.
Yeah, school department wouldn't have control of extending their funds into making these improvements. It's going to have to come from the town. So there has to be some kind of guarantee from the town that these things are going to happen.
I think if I saw a letter from Bill Coyle that said there was a plan in place to, you know, upgrade this road. Within a separate period of time with either school board or, you know, town money.
Chapter ninety.
Town money regardless. You know, administration or, or school department money. And then I had a Graves memo that said all the conditions have been met and they were just outstanding. I feel like I'd be comfortable with that. I don't know about you all.
I'd be comfortable with that.
And I think that going back to the beefy conceptual design and a general cost estimate is really where that whole conversation has to start. And this team here has the most familiarity with this site, with school design and traffic in general, at least in this room. So we would look to you to put something together that will lead us down the funding road of, of where we need to go.
Go ahead.
Adam, um, you, you mentioned conditional approval and as a potential option. With the, with the commitment to, to do these off-site improvements within a certain timeframe. What, you, you mentioned the, uh, certi- certificate of occupancy. Like what, is that, is that the sort of timeframe you're, you're thinking along or are you thinking?
Again, I.
Extend beyond that?
I, I think it's a conversation that the board has to really have. I mean, I can advise them and I think it also depends on the scope of the work, the cost of the work, what the funding sources are and, and some of that conversation. I, I'm not comfortable saying it would be certificate of occupancy timeframe or possibly beyond at this point because it, right now, it's just sort of an amorphous concept. With something in front of us, it, it makes it a much easier thing for me to make a recommendation on. Ultimately, the board has to decide what that timeframe is. All I do is advise them on, you know, what conversations I've had with other departmental staff, other town staff. And, and what I think is a reasonable recommendation for them to make.
The reason I bring it up is the concern I would have is as you get into that left turn lane at the Southbridge-West intersection. You're looking at, you know, permit, permitting through Mass DOT and that's, that's really off.
Well, no, I, I think you, I think they're more looking at the left turn coming into the site.
Yeah, they're.
Not at the Southbridge-West Street.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I think they're looking more, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, and it could, it could be a matter of both, so. And I think that we recognize what the permitting timeframes are. We recognize that, you know, if you're into a DOT or an ENF situation. You're clearly not going to mop it up in ninety days. It's going to have a, a little bit longer shelf life. And I think that's where the conversation comes in with the board on what they're, what they're comfortable with as far as timeframes. Uh, and I think that there's going to have to be specific benchmarks. If, if it is something where it's an ENF, they may have some requirement that you've completed that permitting process by occupancy. And that the funds be secured and construction of that turn lane be done within so much time of occupancy. I think that part of the problem with extending it beyond occupancy is the board's illustrated their concern for the function of the site without that. And if you're occupying the building, what are those impacts? But I think that's a, a grander conversation once you've brought something back to.
Maybe it could, it, it could be a two, maybe it could be a two-part improvement process where the, the left turn, left turn lane is one, is.
Sure.
The initial part and then the turning lane, you know, with, with permitting associated.
And I think that that's something that, that your team needs to really sort of sit down and, and hammer out. First of all, what they think is going to solve it, what they think the recommendation is, and then, you know, how you think it's most reasonable to approach it. And, and I think then at that point, the board can look at it and say, all right, you, you, we think you've solved the problem. Or we think that you've mostly solved it and here's the one thing we don't. And we think that what you're looking at as a timeframe makes sense. I, I don't think it's a one-sided conversation. I don't think the board's trying to tell you, you have to do this, this, or this. I think they're saying, we've identified this issue. How do you think it's most reasonable to address it based on the information that they've given back? And I.
So you know what you have to do, okay, to make this a very easy transition.
Now, what's your timeline with Boston?
Boston?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, right now, we're on a, I mean, we're trying to be open for the twenty fifteen, sixteen school season. So for, you know, be done with construction, uh, July of twenty fifteen.
Okay.
To do that, we need to start construction around about March first of this year. There's an early site package going out, uh, the seventeenth and, you know, with the bids coming back in early February and, you know, looking to get an award. And, you know, we, obviously at that point, we need to get some, at least foundation permits and stuff in place so that we could do site work, which is going to be continued on site plan approval and stuff, obviously. Moving forward, so.
Well, you've got two traffic, you've got all the information from two traffic studies, okay? Basically, our concern is traffic. Okay, with that information and an engineer to design it. If you can come back with a piece of paper that shows what's going to be done. And have somebody present how they're going to rectify the problems that you know are there and we know are there. I don't see why we can't work it out.
But it has to be done quickly because it has to be done, because they have to be moving forward by March.
I understand that. Our next meeting is the fourteenth, I believe.
Correct. Just before the next ZBA meeting, so it doesn't, you know. Just before the next ZBA meeting, so that doesn't, you know, the 14th wouldn't, wouldn't work for us anyway. What's this?
Correct. The next regularly scheduled would be the 28th.
28th. Yeah. 17th to the 28th, yeah.
Well, I'll be here both days, and then I won't be here on March 1st. Anyway, um, what I would say then, you want to reschedule us then for the 28th?
Yeah. Whatever.
I think they're all, you, you people are all together, right?
Yeah, we're all, it's all there.
I, I, I didn't want to leave anybody out if somebody else had a public comment that was in the audience.
Oh, these are all consultants and stuff of the.
So you want to try and.
You want it the 14th or you want, what do you want to do?
14th is so good because before the ZBA, I think.
I think the turnaround time, I mean, you'd have to have me something in two days, so.
Yeah.
That means Matt's going back to the office tonight and sitting down at the computer to turn it around by Thursday if you want to do it on the 14th.
Except I'm not the traffic engineer.
Oh, okay, so. I figured it was going to be some civil work, too, so.
So.
That would be your next regularly scheduled meeting after ZBA.
The 28th.
All right.
We need a motion on that.
Let's see what they say. See what they say, so, son, you're going to make a motion. So you have ZBA, when's the CONCOM?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay. So you have both of those done by the 28th, and you should have some kind of comeback or something.
Yeah, and I mean, theoretically, they wouldn't need CONCOM for you to make.
No.
An approval because you have an, uh, ANRAD already, correct? So that, I mean, outside, outside of.
CONCOM wrapped up tomorrow night.
Yeah, and outside of that, everything's locked down for you as far as, they're not going to make you move things. It may just be construction orders that, so that wouldn't necessarily affect the planning board approval.
All right, so you want to come back then?
28th, yeah. So when do you need the, uh, the documents back in for the.
Uh, if I had them by the, the 22nd.
Okay.
Now, that would be to get to the board. If you want them distributed internally, you know, for comment from DPW or FIRE or any of that stuff, uh, the sooner the better because I would need to have them comment and have their stuff back to me by the 22nd as well.
Mm-hmm. I really think of a letter from Bill Coyle saying that, you know, there's a plan in place, we have a lot of weight with me at least.
Yeah.
So we, we know that we're not approving a project that's still kind of leaving town on the hook for, well, a number we don't know.
All right. Is there any more from you people? No.
Motion to continue the meeting to January 28th.
Second.
Seven oh five, 7:15.
Why don't you call 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
Second.
If you have anything else on the agenda.
Yeah.
Paul, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
No, nothing else at this time, and I think, well, going forward, we'll just start scheduling all of our hearings at 7 o'clock, and that way you don't have to wait for times.
Sounds good.
And inform the people that are coming in that that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
That they might be sitting here.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
No, nothing else at this time, and I think, well, going forward, we'll just start scheduling all of our hearings at 7 o'clock, and that way you don't have to wait for times.
Sounds good.
And inform the people that are coming in that that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.